Our time is nineteen oh seven, seven oh seven. I have a motion and a second to open regular business.
Motion.
Second. And at this time, we'll do the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. Uh, John, if you can start us off with the pledge, please.
Pledge my flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our moment of silence, our moment of silence tonight is for Bill Norris, class of nineteen forty-three. He was in the original Hall of Fame class in two thousand eight and was a U.S. Air Force Major General, which oversaw all Air Force bases in Europe. Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion and a second to approve the board agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion.
And Judy, thank you. Okay, presentations, the only ones we have on the agenda for tonight are our student board representative reports, uh, and I agree.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anaya Green, and thank you for the offer to be served on the board.
Hold on a second, I, uh, we're gonna give you some tools. We have one microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anaya Green, and thank you for the offer to be served on the board. On November twenty-first, we then government participated in a steering convention and party platform elections at Newburg Free Academy with Ms. Prokowski and Ms. Piscatelli. On November twenty-sixth, we celebrated around three hundred and thirty-five honorable students with a special breakfast. The high school continued the tradition of distributing turkeys and all the trimmings for Thanksgiving dinners to around twenty-three families. The Porcherus Youth Coalition Character Trait of the Month for December is courage. Wear yellow on Wednesdays. Tonight at seven P.M. will be the band and concert winter, will be the band and chorus winter concert in auditorium. Seven fall teams received the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Team as Scholar-Athlete Award. These averages are determined by weighted first marking period grades. Congratulations to the following teams: Boy Soccer, Girls Cross Country, Football Cheerleading, Girls Soccer, Girls Volleyball, Boys Cross Country, and Girls Tennis. On December thirteenth and fourteenth, the Porcherus High School Drama Club presents a Charlie Brown Christmas at the Milford Theater Friday at seven P.M. and Saturday at seven P.M. December fourteenth, mock trial will have a competition. Also on December fourteenth, an annual winter wrestling tournament will be held at the Porcherus High School. December sixteenth will be the very last call for senior Porcheria makeups at nine A.M. to twelve noon in the Porcherus High School library. Progress reports will be available on December thirtieth. The indoor walking trail is returning to the high school and middle school on Tuesdays and Thursdays from December third to March twentieth, between the hours of four fifteen and five forty-five P.M. Friday, December twentieth, the chapter will host their annual holiday party at the Porcherus Youth Center from five thirty to eight thirty P.M. Winter break starts on Friday, December twentieth, and will end on January sixth. The Porcherus High School celebrated a victory of the boys' football team winning the semifinals on Saturday, December thirtieth in Middletown against Glenns Falls, Glenns Falls High School and becoming the New York State Eastern Regional Champions. A send-off parade was held on Friday, December sixth, as the team headed off Syracuse to compete in the state finals against Maine Edwell. The entire Porcherus School District and community are beyond proud of the team's and coaching staff's accomplishments. The Red Raiders returned victorious on Saturday, December sixth, from Syracuse to a hometown welcome after beating the Maine Edwell Spartans thirty-three to twenty-six, and a nail-biter to have, to be the first football team in Porcherus High School history to win a state champion.
All right. Do we have anybody for public comment? No public comment. Which brings us to administrative reports. Uh, first up, Dr. John Bell, Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. As Anaya said, uh, the game Saturday night was just incredible, the win, to play in the Carrier Dome in Syracuse on Division One field, and to have it be inside so we didn't freeze like they did the last couple of weeks, which was just awesome. Uh, a lot of people may not know, this is our sixth state champion team, with golf team won in nineteen sixty-five, the wrestling team won in nineteen seventy-seven and seventy-eight, the girls softball team won in eighty-four and eighty-five, so this one will be our sixth team. If you ever go in the gym on the far side, you'll see a list of all the banners for Orange County titles and section titles, but on the wall closest to the nurses office and the main office, there are individual banners for each state championship team. Uh, so, and then there's also two banners for all our individual state champs that we have in golf and wrestling and pole vaulting and discus and all that stuff. So there'll be a whole new flag or a new banner that'll go in the gym for this team. Uh, the playoffs didn't start in football until the nineteen nineties, so that's why there were many other teams that are of a lunge who are very jealous that they never got a chance to play in the state tournament in the sixties and seventies and eighties because there was no state tournament. You got to the end of your season and that was it. So it's just awesome. So we all lived vicariously through these kids last Saturday night. Uh, I think it was the most nervous day of my life. It was worse than my wedding. I, at least at my wedding, I could do something about it. When you're a fan, you can't do anything. You are just stuck there for two hours worried about all the things that could go wrong. And, uh, and that last play when they threw the ball all over the place, I thought, oh my God, if we lose like this, uh, God, if you haven't seen the film, you gotta see it. It's, they must have passed the ball six or seven times, throw the ball all over the field, and our kids are amazing though. When they lost in that playoff game last year and ride for Westchester County beat us, and then Riley went on and won the whole thing, they won the state title. That's why I think our boys believe, hey, we are at that level that maybe we didn't know we were, and they were locked on all school year. There were people I know from Porcheres that booked hotels in Syracuse back in July because they were convinced this team was gonna make it. I asked them if they did the prepaid, you don't pick your money back, they wouldn't answer me. But they did, nonetheless, they reserve hotel rooms, so, but it was really amazing. Uh, and then we quickly transitioned to, uh, winter sports, and we hosted a multi-school girls wrestling meet. There was a slew of girls here last night. There had to be probably eighty or ninety girls, and, uh, and it was really just a big, big deal. New York State Wrestling was talking all about this huge multi-school meet at Porcheres, and Charlie Wiley, um, got her one-hundredth win in girls wrestling, and she's the first girl in Section Nine history to get a hundred wins. And she's, and, uh, so it's really amazing. So good for her and good for our girls. Um, I wanted to update the community on our team nickname slash mascot. Uh, the whole month of November and a little bit into December, we, we had over four hundred comments, uh, and ideas. I can't share all the comments in public, what they said to us, but that's a story for another night. Uh, but we do have about fifty ideas for team names. We're in the process right now of looking at all those things, and are there any historical connections to the river, to the railroad, to all these different things. And the next step will be is that just before vacation, we will announce that we're gonna shrink that list from almost fifty down to something less than ten, and I'm gonna have some kids help me with a video. We're gonna unveil the finalists, and then the kids are gonna vote in January when we come back to school. They're gonna pick what they wanna be going forward in the future from a list. So we'll be doing that in January. Um, so the board members, the public doesn't have this because we don't have a screen here, but the board members, in your folders tonight, uh, there's a chart that looks like this, and it's a history of our state building aid ratios, and it starts all the way back in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, and the last column, it said, in that box, at the bottom, says B L D four. That is our building aid ratio when we can do construction projects. You've heard me say more, more than once, we need to build while the getting's good, you know? All the way back in twenty-ten, we were only getting eighty-two percent on building projects. Then it went, it was eighty-two, eighty-two and a half, eighty-two point eight, then it went to eighty-four, went to eighty-five, it went to eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-one again, ninety-one point four, and two, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, our building aid ratio went to ninety-two point three, and then it went to ninety-two point nine. So the idea is, the higher that number is, that's the percentage the state pays, as opposed to us having to go to our taxpayer's store. So the fact that we've done all this work and we have more work lined up is because this is the perfect time to do it. When this number is high, we get more state aid and we have to use less of our money. Uh, our financial people are expecting our building aid to drop from ninety-two point nine to about ninety point six next year, and the reason being is after COVID, um, property values have gone up, and this has about a three-year lag on it. So as the property values went up in Hudson Valley, people's building aids are gonna drop because we're gonna appear richer than a lot of schools upstate that didn't have the move of people moving out of New York City. So it's imperative that we continue to build as fast as we can before that number goes down again, because then we're gonna have to start paying a larger share of it. So I'd like you'd like to see that. And also, in this column, across here, there are white boxes in the middle of those categories. What those are, they are all the construction projects that we've done since twenty-ten, how much they were, what was the, what was the date, and what were the yes and no votes for all those different projects. So it's interesting to see, you know, one point eight million, one point eight five million, five point two million, three point seven, seven million, five and a half million, and they were all projects every day between twenty-ten and twenty-seventeen. Lots of small things, windows, roofs, lighting, stuff like that. And then you get to the big ones, sixty-five million in Phase One and Two, the twelve point three, twelve point three million in Phase Three, and the twenty-six million that the voters approved last May for Phase Four. So it's a nice little cheat sheet to have, just so you can see the list of all the projects that have been approved and how our building aid ratio has moved. And I have no faith in the state that the number will stay high for building aid, so it's important that we build as much as we can, as fast as we can, before they change the formula, uh, because they're too cheap, and, uh, so we have to beat them to the punch. So that's what that's all about, the history of that. Okay, I have two more things for you. The next thing I just wanted to let everybody know, we're still working with Orange and Rockland on the solar field, um, up on the Vicarati property in Deer Park. It's, it's a tremendous amount of bureaucracy dealing with Con Ed, uh, but the goal is to build a seven-acre solar field that would eliminate our electricity bills for all our schools. We're totally wiping that out. We spend a couple hundred thousand dollars a year on electricity bills. So if we can pull this off, when, and there's a lot involved with approvals and making sure Orange and Rockland has the ability to accept that much electricity, but we're gonna continue to work on that process because we would really love to get rid of our electricity bills. There's a lot more exciting things we can spend our money on than on electricity bills. So I'll keep you posted on that. And then the final thing is that, um, the city and the school district, uh, are working together, um, to put together a parade for the championship football team, and there'll be more details coming out, but it's gonna be on Sunday, December twenty-second in the afternoon. Uh, so we'll be having a parade that'll start downtown in the Plaza by Birmingham King, and then it'll go along Front and Jersey Ave, then it will go up Fowler Street, then it will turn on the East Main, and it'll end in one of that fields. So, uh, so you'll hear more about that, and we got a lot of things. Mr. Hockeber, our councilman at large, he's got all kinds of wild ideas, so I'm trying to keep them. And, uh, so, but that's, uh, Sunday, the twenty-second, will be the parade to honor the team. They've already had two quasi-parades, well, they've had, I think, three times. The fire trucks have let them in. You know, on Saturday night, they let them in, and it was quarter after eleven when they got home. Sunday, they were in the holiday parade, that runs from Madison, Porcheres, and now they'll get their own parade, uh, for the championship. So that's everything.
Uh, if you want, just pass it down to Dr., uh, sorry, John Tim, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Thank you for that, uh, title. Didn't cost me anything, and I didn't have to study, so I appreciate that. So, uh, it's amazing, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget season is coming upon us. It's very difficult to say that. You gotta think way ahead and think that we're going to twenty-six. The initial state aid runs will be coming out in January. There's a lot of anxiety, uh, because there's been some changes in foundation aid, so can't wait to see those numbers come through. And foundation aid drives most of what, most of state aid, and as I've mentioned before, as a district, we hang, we weigh heavily on state aid. Two-thirds of our revenue comes from state aid, and the other third comes from local revenues, where most districts are the complete opposite. So, you know, we've got a trend of four years of zero increase in taxes. I'm not sitting here and promising you that will happen again, but I will try my hardest to keep it as low as possible. This is really all dependent on state aid. I have actually scheduled meetings in the later part of January with principals, directors, and administrators. In my first presentation, we'll be at the board meeting in February. It'll be February eleventh. We'll review the role of the budget. That's all I have for the season.
And Tanya Durie, Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services.
Good evening. Um, as Mr. Tim was saying, we always look at state aid, and it's very unpredictable. There's one item on the agenda, Medicaid bill and U D O stipend. That's an additional, um, revenue that the district is seeking to grasp that is allowable. It is our school social workers will be now billing Medicaid for counseling services that we provide to students with disabilities and who are eligible. So that'll be a nice, um, revenue for us. Secondly, I want everyone to know we did have, um, a health and safety and wellness district-wide meeting on December fourth. It was a very positive meeting. Um, the principals did a great job highlighting all of the different health and wellness activities and arrangements going on in all four buildings. We are having a lot of mental health assemblies. Um, ADAC has been very present and connected in collaborating with, um, the building staff as well as families. Um, H P E's doing a fitness Friday, one time a month for staff to really build that climate, you know, wellness and morale with the staff. Uh, I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday, and I just want, would like to also give a friendly reminder of the mental health supports. Um, our website have been updated. It's very comprehensive. Uh, it has additional phone numbers. They are all compartmentalized based on needs. I know we have, um, a break coming up. Please, uh, the public, uh, staff, refer yourselves and use that as a resource, um, for anyone. Please pass it on. Also, lastly, our staff and community has been very generous to our families, uh, providing baskets of food during the holiday season, as well as, um, toys, clothing, and appropriate attire for the winter, and for that, we are forever grateful.
Yes, I have a couple of questions to ask. I, I can speak well.
Very well.
Mr. Tim, real quick, um, I, you know, we, again, we, we're winding down on the, on the building. How are we doing as far as budget, as far as, you know, what we're, you know, are we still under budget or still under budget?
I say conservatively approximately three, four, five million.
Is that expectation that we're under budget now, but we're going to spend that, or are we hopeful that we're gonna continue to be under budget?
We're gonna continue to be under budget. Things are slowing down that would increase that cost, so those are pretty much come to all, uh, what they call it, as incidentals, things that are not originally part of the plan, adding to that, but those have slowed down, so.
Is there any concern, and, and I don't know if this is you or, or, or Dr. Bell, is there any concern because we are under budget? You know, is there some sort of mandate or, or that, that we have to spend X amount, you know, or are we penalized if we, like, are we penalized if we are under budget? That's, that's the question.
Not at all. So there are, there are two approaches to the remaining money. We can borrow less, so we still have to borrow the project, so we can borrow less, or we can take that money and use that in some of the other projects, that the language of things one and two, and even three, there's just one and two. It's so vague that we could potentially take that money and use that in some of the, some of the projects, which it's, it's a wash either way. Either approach you take, it's, it's one hand, or the other, so, you know, if you were to take that and put it into some of the roofs or whatever part of the projects that, because when the projects are written, they're very, they're very open to interpretation, so we could take that money and use that money for those projects. But then you, you know, if you spent, if you were to borrow less, you would spend it over, you would spend that money eventually and borrow later, so.
Thank you. No penalty, no.
Okay, thank you for those reports. That brings us to consent agenda items. These items include item A, minutes, Board of Education regular meeting on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Item B, minutes from December tenth, two thousand twenty-four, C S E and C P S E recommendations. Item C, new C S E vendor, McCormick Taxi and Car Service. And then finally, item D, approval of the December tenth, two thousand twenty-four consent agenda items. I have a motion and a second. Andy?
Second.
Michael, thank you. All in favor?
I have a quick question.
Yes?
Who is McCormick Taxi Service? Is that the one next to Bobby's Taxi, Porcherus Taxi, is that, and then one that just?
So I'm, I'm not certain where her, her status and station is. Um, it's Danielle McCormick. She's fully insured. She's actually a graduate of, um, Porcherus High School and has children here, and it, I believe she originated, um, maybe a year ago, and she now has five taxis. Um, and they engage in a contract with her for specific service, special situations for students who need to be transported.
And just so people know, it's cheaper to use a taxi than it is to use a bus to transport one kid somewhere. Uh, if they need a ride home, they need, uh, a visit to an added district placement, something like that. It's a lot cheaper to use a taxi.
All right, all in favor, uh, approval? I, I opposed. Motion carried. Brings us to personal unemployment agenda items, which include item A, leaves of absence. B, resignation, support staff position five one zero, food service helper. Item C, resignation, extracurricular position, senior class advisor. Item D, resignation, position three nine one eight, school psychologist. Item E, resignation to accept new in-district position, support staff, position four four six, cleaner. Item F, resignation to accept new in-district position, position five zero eight, food service helper. Item G is an appointment, vacancy two six two two, department chairs, grade level chairs, co-curricular, and coaching appointments for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Item H, appointment, support staff, vacancy two six three zero, position two eight four seven, probationary school monitor. Item I, appointment, support staff, vacancy two six five one, position five zero eight, probationary food service helper. Item J, appointment, support staff, vacancy two six five one, position five one zero, probationary food service helper. Item K, appointment, excuse me, support staff, vacancy two six five two, position three seven one five, probationary senior food service helper. Item L, appointment, support staff, vacancy two six five three, position two two nine eight, probationary teacher eight. Item M, and his appointment, support staff substitutes. Item N, appointment, substitute teachers for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. And item O, appointment, medical billing, U D O stipend for social workers and speech pathologist. Item M would be an approval for these personnel employment items. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Bill Harris, Kathy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, action items. Item A, new scholarship, the Rise and Grind Scholarship. I have a motion and a second to bring to the floor.
Second.
Mike and Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to give our thanks.
Thank you, noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item B, resolution, uh, M H R I C, the R I C One Risk Operations Center Agreement. Motion and a second to bring item to the floor.
Second.
Judy and.
Kathy, thank you.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item C is SECR, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the lead agency resolution, Phase Five at the two oh nine complex. May I have a motion and a second to bring to the floor? Motion.
Second.
Donnie and Michael, thank you. Questions or discussion?
I'll just add, Phase Five is the next project, which will be going to the voters in May. Uh, we haven't finalized the scope of what's involved, but the secret approval is one of those we have to jump through well in advance. There's all specific timelines of things we have to do leading up to the vote in May, so you'll be hearing more about that after Christmas, about what's in Phase Five and what has to wait until Phase Six. Probably haven't heard that before, Phase Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item D, capital project allowances and change orders. Uh, motion and a second to bring to the floor? Kathy? Bill, thank you. Questions or discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
We're almost at the end of the change orders. This is for Phases One, Two, and Three, but they're determined to set a world record for being the slowest possible solving of the punch list. It's been incredible. Pulling our hair out, but we're almost there. We're almost there.
Brings us to item E, policy, first and final reading. Policy numbers seven one one zero, seven one one one, seven one one two, seven one one three, seven one two zero, seven one three zero. Uh, motion and a second to bring to the floor. Judy and Mike, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Do you want me to explain her album?
Do you like to?
Don't ask her that.
Quite a few.
There are six policies on tonight's first and final.
We have six, uh, policies up for first and final reading. We came up with these minuscule changes that we wanted during our policy review. Many of them were originally from when we did it in two thousand three, so we're just personalizing them with the name of the district, and these are, as he said, attendance records, excuses and absences, release time of students, age of entrance, and student attendance policy. In the latter one, we also changed the his or her to the politically correct there on pages three and four, as we did on pages one and three of, um, seven one three oh, entitlement to receive educational services. In the latter on the first page, we also added and put into parentheses the requirement that we educate special ed students to twenty-two years. Then we have four poli, wait, go on.
I'll save that. Are you going to be reading the following ones? Just hold on to that. So we'll finish that up for item E. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item F is policy, first reading, policy numbers 6550, 7223, 7412, 7536. Motion and a second to bring to the floor? Judy and Bill, thank you. And go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, we have four policies up for first reading. The first three are suggestions from the April-June Quality Quarterly Policy Review. Last one is from July to September 1. We personalized each of them. 6550 on leaves of absence was revised because we had to reflect changes in New York State law requiring employers to provide nursing mothers with 30 minutes paid breaks to express breast milk. Additionally, we removed reference, which was in our original policy, to the requirement for jurors to turn over any compensation they received to the district since those who aren't paid by the district do not receive any checks from the jury service. We verified that we complied with the posting requirements for that one. 7223 is on advanced coursework. It's a brand-new policy in response to a recent Assembly Bill and requires districts to notify parents and students of the opportunities available for advanced courses, which we feel we are doing both primary and secondary buildings. 7421 is on student government. This is another new policy in response to a Senate bill. It requires districts with grades nine to 12 to establish at least one peer-selected government organization, which we already do. 7536 is on educational services for married pregnant students and is the third policy developed in response to Title IX regulations. Mainly, this is just putting into print that we have to ensure that students can access lactation spaces when necessary.
Quite a bit on policy there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item G, also regarded policy, second and final reading, policy numbers 5665, 5681, and 5683. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor?
I'll move it.
Kathy? And Mark?
I went over all these last stuff, guys.
Very good. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Brings us to board member items. First up, item A, board committee reports. Buildings and ground committee, anything? No. Bill, that brings us to the DLT committee delegate?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Thank you. And Deer Park liaison, Joanne Dragic, is at the...
Yeah, my counselor.
Will have to report.
The Town in Deer Park Annual Holiday Decoration Contest. Please call the Town's Clerk's Office at 856-2210, extension number two, to register. Judging will be from December 13th to the 15th. Winners will be announced on Monday, December 16th, and prizes will be given. Additionally, the mobile DMV will be at the Deer Park Senior Center December 18th.
And Portervis liaison, Nancy Dunn.
The Portervis Tours and Board would like to formally and publicly thank the Honorable Students who helped with the Christmas riddle mark that was held last weekend in Portervis. Upcoming, the Christmas Market and Winter Wonderland started on December 7th. They'll have another one on December 14th, from 3:00 to 8:00 at 517 Never Sink Drive at New Century. They have a tree lighting, they have a lot of arts and crafts for the kids, they have heated tents with entertainment, yada, yada, yada. Next. Okay. It's that time of year again to sign up for the Holiday Lighting Contest, open to all residents and businesses within the city limits of Portervis. Great prizes. Applications are available on the city's website, Or you can pick up forms and drop off at the City Clerk's Office. Entry deadline is December 17th at 4:00 p.m. Whoville is returning to Port on December 15th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Promenade Downtown in Portervis. You can meet the Grinch, the Mayor of Whoville, and other Whoville residents. You can enjoy a roast beast sandwich and hot chocolate and have a grand old time. And the other thing that I just wanted to announce for anybody that's listening, I guess, and coaches and teams, the Salvation Army this year has so few volunteers that they're actually paying people to ring the bell in instances. So obviously, that's counterproductive to their purpose. So if you, any public people are interested, public people, that sounds terrible, public persons, if anyone would like to ring the bell, just call the Salvation Army office. If you're a coach and you have a team, that maybe the football team, I mean, they were well represented by the community, maybe they'd like to pay back. Maybe, I don't know, but I'm just doing a public plug, okay?
Do I ring the bell of the Promenade or the Promenade?
Promenade.
Promenade.
You drink some Promenade.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Education committee, do you have anything with that?
No.
House?
No.
Health and Wellness Committee?
We have a meeting on December 4th, and the big topic that we're discussing is, it's called return to learn. It's a concussion protocol. There historically has been a return to play for districts to have policy procedure in place for students to come back and play safely. But now the American Medical Association and the New York State Education Department is working to create a return to learn. Lori Sexton is, we're heading this. I met with Lori and Linda today, and we are working with Dr. Little, and then we will be rolling out and getting feedback from teachers and building administrators and also families regarding the tool for implementation, with the whole intent and the goal of the protocol procedure for the return to learn is for students, a large portion of students should return within 48 hours after the concussion with certain adjustments, modifications, and supports because we want to get our kids back into the classroom and learning. So I will provide additional information once that procedure is completed.
Safety Committee?
So the Safety Committee met also on Wednesday, December 4th. The meeting was led by Justin Moshe and myself. We reported that we're not really only just meeting as a district, but we actually are going individually to the schools and having Safety Committee meetings so that we can individualize the plans specific to the buildings. So it's been very productive. A lot of times in the District Committee, a school may not want to address something in the vicinity of the school and lose the attention of the else. So this gives us the opportunity to get into the schools, walk around, see individual rooms, look at all the hot spots, et cetera. So de-automation continues to install door swipe struggle district. They're almost complete at East Main, HB will move the next, and then onto the 209 complex. One thing that we addressed and had a discussion about is during a lockdown, employee badges are immediately deactivated. The reason they're, this is important, is that if there's an intruder and in the building, they can take the badge and swipe any door. However, the thing that we're bumping into here is that there might be teachers and students in the hallways in transition, either taking their students to the bathroom, et cetera, to another room. So we were kicking around the idea, discussing the importance of a 20 to 30 second delay in actually deactivating those cards. So that wasn't, you know, it doesn't seem like a lot of time. What happens is they would just jump right into the immediate room. And the way that schools are designed, there's always, using EME, there's always one to jump into. So 20 to 30 seconds, we were, we're going to make a decision on that, but it worked with IT. But to immediately deactivate, yes.
Is that done manually with deactivation? Somebody has to do, or it goes once the lockdown?
It goes once you go into lockdown. If that... We had demonstration with the metal detectors and wand detectors. The committee agreed it was important to introduce the metal detectors to the public first, i.e. like a basketball game, as opposed to exposing the kids to it and having the fear of unknown. We wanted the community to see it, see what it's all about. It's not really intrusive. Just walk through, and then we'll get to the point where we are actually using these at the schools. Also, a handout was given. We've established some protocols and procedures on exactly what to do and how to go get people through and how to inspect bags and how something goes off, what you do, you know, you don't want to humiliate somebody in front of everybody, especially a student. What do you do? What do you do? So we discussed that with the protocols. I showed a quick video clip of the effectiveness of armored one, which is the protective shield that's put on the glass. Though that was pretty effective. This is going to be, this is actually throughout the entire district. The majority of this is installed at this point. The few areas need to be addressed. There's some spots that haven't sealed properly. They told us it still works. They worked its way out. And then there are a few other windows that need to be installed on. Exterior strobe lights have been ordered and they should arrive soon. This is effective because when we go into lockdown and you drive up onto the school, you're not going to hear the alarm, I don't know, but those strobe lights will indicate, hey, we're in lockdown. You have that visualization, they'll know how to approach the school. Message boards will be installed soon. They've been ordered and it should be installed. This is effective because there's areas in the building where you may not hear the lockdown announcements, such as cafeterias, gym, the auditorium. So having it visually in a spot where you can see the message, we're in lockdown, we're in lockdown, will assist as well. So that's pretty much it. It was a very productive meeting, so thank you.
I just have a quick one.
Absolutely.
So what are your... Were there teachers in the room when you're discussing? Is the teachers were okay on waiting to use these metal detectors after school's already begun and events that, you know, like not starting them in September? That was okay with the group?
Absolutely, yeah. So everybody's a little bit...
Because I personally, I mean, I'm not a teacher, or what they want on TV, but I would want that as soon as the school opened, I'd want that in place. And not just as a teacher, but my, as a mother, as a grandmother, I'd want, as soon as you get it in your hands, put it up.
It's very labor intensive. It takes a, it's very labor intensive. It takes a lot of people to pull it off. So that's why we're trying to create the procedures right now and roll it out to some basketball games and wrestling matches in the next couple of weeks. So that when we come back after Christmas, we can then start saying, okay, we worked out the bugs. Maybe just a couple, 200 people at a basketball game before we try to do 750 kids in high school and then other five simply.
What do you say is like a train?
It's like, it's almost like to train our security people. I'm going to have, okay, what do you do? Single file, pull your Chromebook out, put that on the table, kind of like when you take your keys out, you put it on the table and you walk through. Yeah, it's like a mini...
So it's a little bit...
Yeah, it's coming down the pipe, yep, yep. It was a lot more labor intensive than we thought, when you think about it. Because you need somebody getting the kids in a single file. You need somebody watching them at red light, green light. You need people to take them to the side. You need people to help them get their Chromebooks around the outside so it doesn't send it off. Who's going to search the bag if it goes red? So it's, it takes a lot more people than we thought. So we've got to, we're trying to work out the logistics of it through using a hoop game and stuff like that. And then we can also do, if you don't want to do the whole school on a day because of the timing of it, how long it takes, you can also spot check and say, today we're going to do these three vessels. And we don't tell anybody, but we pull all the kids. Or today, we're going to do all the walkers. And tomorrow, we're going to do all the drivers, the student driver, you know, so you can mix it up and so that there's that randomness that people never know what's going to happen and try to keep people honest.
Okay, I thought that what you were saying is, you know, wait till October, November, or year. I'm like, if we've got them, let's just...
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. We are a party. Very good. I'm also, okay.
Very good. Thank you. Michael Witt, anything from NISBA?
Nothing right now.
Nothing right now. Thank you. Bill Harris, anything from the county?
No, this month's next meeting is January 15th.
Very good. And then Kathy, anything else from policy?
We met up November 19th, and we will next meet on January 7th.
January 7th?
We're not through December.
Very good, thank you. Yes. Now we're up to board comments. We'll start over with Mike. And then we can just pass it around.
You can't just have those say here. It's great things happening in the district. Of course, congratulations to the football team and for all the staff and all of the community that turned out in Syracuse. Just to see our side of the stadium packed like that is unbelievable. We were away for our anniversary. My wife made us watch the entire game beginning and we're walking in the house kitchen with a football game playing. So thank you for having the late games. Thanks to Kristen Rodd for everything he does to keep everything on the website, on the Facebook page. I don't think we, there's a more informed district in the area than Portervis is right now. I get a lot of those comments. So thanks to the administration, everybody in all the buildings, and just for our community, just still for being great. A lot of things still happening, a lot of money coming and going, but we're in good shape thanks to the administration that we have in place. So we're very lucky, and I want to just say thank you to everybody.
I too want to wish the, you know, our, our football team, I'm so very proud of them. And also, let's give everyone a happy holiday.
Ditto.
Kathy, are happy.
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Long, as well as each of the music and drama teachers for their multiple concerts and programs that are going on this week and the week afters, which showcased our talented students and entertained our whole community. Congrats to Charlie Wiley on her 100 wins. I also want to thank and congratulate Coach Straharsky, all of his assistants, and our fantastic football team for their great season and for winning the first and only New York State championship for our Red Raiders. Matt Withrow hosted Bets Dad, and I agree that there were a lot of former Portervis coaches that were at the Academy on Saturday. I wasn't able to make it up to the Dome this weekend, but I would also like to thank Kevin Howden and Tom Fagion for their enthusiastic play-by-play coverage of the entire game that allowed those of us who couldn't be there to hear it. They all epitomized what is so special about this. Lastly, I just want to say to wish holiday best to my fellow board members, administrators, staff, students, community, as you go about celebrating, whether it's your Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, or just the community that's coming. So enjoy you all.
Aye.
Thank you. I just want to kind of echo what you just mentioned about some of our other programs. I wasn't able to make it up to the football game on Saturday because it was sandwiched in between two performances of 101 Dalmatians. That was that. And I just wanted to commend everybody, Bill and Mystic Con, you know, and everybody else. It was just a great performance. I know it was, you know, it's a lot of people's first time being involved in something like that. So great job, and happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, I had an amazing weekend Friday night. I got to see 101 Dalmatians, Bill. Amazing job. Thank you for your time. The show was great. I give it three arfs with an up paw. It truly was one of the cutest things I've ever seen. I have had the privilege of going to Stanley Cup Games. I've been to World Series Games. I've been to NFL playoff games. I can honestly say I don't think I was ever more nervous or more vested in the game on Saturday at the Dome. Saturday at the Dome. It was an experience of a lifetime, but I do want to take a moment. I want to thank all of our athletes that participate. You know, you work hard, you sacrifice, you sweat, you bleed. I don't care if your season was 0-16, or you're the New York State Champions, I thank you for representing yourself, your family, your school, and your community. You play hard, and never forget, you play for your reputation, win or lose, but I do want to thank all the athletes that, that work hard and represent us. So thank you very, very much to all of you, and again, happy holidays to everybody, and I will give it to you, Mr. Bill.
Just echoing the other seven statements that you heard, just want to end the year, no matter what you celebrate, what you celebrate, don't celebrate, we're all ending this year together, and we're starting another new year, and why don't we just have in our hearts some hope, peace, of enjoying going into the new year.
Well said. I think I'm just literally going to echo almost everything everybody else in regards to our football team, and congratulations extended to them. I think it goes a little bit further, obviously, you got to talk about the coaches and the players. These players, as Mark noted, these guys started back in June, we're in December. Now think about that, it's been a seven-month project, this football season, you know, so there's quite a bit involved. I think congratulations goes out to their support systems at home, right? Seven months of mom and dad, and big brother, and little brother, and everybody doing their own sacrifice to get into this, right? So the whole community thing, from top to bottom, old timers to the youth program, so proud of these boys and these coaches. The one note I really want to address, since they won this championship, it's actually been pretty amazing to recognize the maturity of these young athletes. You know, we've all been discussing what it meant to the community, how much it meant to the old timers, how we have coaches in heaven. For these teenage boys to go out and win this championship, and they get interviewed and they get quoted in papers, for them to actually recognize the gravity of what they've accomplished and what it means to everybody, and every time you talk to one of these kids, they talk about what it meant to their community, what it means to this school. I really have to commend their coaches, their teachers, their support systems at home for actually instilling that pride and confidence in them, so kudos to everybody all around, congratulations, that's well deserved. With that, I think we're going to move to the adjournment portion of the meeting, which would start with things to remember. Bill, if you want to walk us through that, please.
Thank you. Friday, December 13th, trimester one report cards will be distributed in our elementary schools. Also, the H B E P T A Family Fun Night, they're going to be painting ornaments at 5:00 P. In the H B E cafeteria. Friday, the 13th, also, Port Jervis High School Drama Club will be presenting the Charlie Brown Christmas in the Milford Theater at 7:00 P. M., as well as 1:00 P. M. on Saturday, December 14th. Saturday, December 14th, in the evening, the Port Jervis Middle School will be giving a Christmas cabaret at the B F W 161 on Owen Street, also at 7:00 o'clock. Monday, December 16th, will be senior portrait makeup, Last Call, 9:00 a.m. in the high school library. Tuesday, December 17th, the E M E Winter Concert in the high school auditorium at 7:00 P. M. Wednesday, December 18th, will be the H B E Winter Concert at 7:00 P. M. in the high school auditorium. Friday, December 20th, high school progress report distribution in the high school. Monday, December 23rd through Friday, January 3rd, will be winter recess, there will be no school. Monday, January 6th, January is for journaling with ADAC, 2:15 P. M. in the high school library, and our next board event meeting will be held in the high school cafeteria on Tuesday, January 14th at 7:00 P. M.
Dr. Bellamy, last notes.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays, everybody. So that would be the adjournment of our business meeting, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Mike and Kathy? Time is 20:03, 8:03. All right, have a good evening, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, stay safe. Oh, sure, we can do that, you want to make it official? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.